Mayor, City Council, first item that we have on the agenda is funding for a UEZ audit. I asked Tom Gilmore to come this evening. This was not on my radar. He is going to describe to City Council what the Asbury Park Zone Assistance Funds are available and a little bit about the Asbury Park Zone Development Corporation. And I'm not going to, I'm going to recommend that City Council does not take any action this evening. And we will be back to City Council with a resolution for the audit, but I thought it was appropriate at this time, Tom, make a presentation regarding the former UEZ program, the current funds balance. Tom?
Sure. Good evening. As you know, we just went through it on the process right now. What this request is, is for the current year, which goes from July 1st until June 30th of 2014. So that was the request from the board. As you know, there is still some money remaining in the UEZ fund. However, we did transfer $33,613.61, which was the amount that the council restricted for the website. So that has been transferred from second generation account into city funds right now. So Ricky Gartz has that money right now. That is restricted for the website. So that has already been done. We do have two loans that are still outstanding that will generate approximately another $14,000 of income to the city, and that is second generation money. It's not here right now, but that will, as they pay off their loan one side, will come to the city, and all the loans are current right now. In addition to that, we still have funding that is left over, which the city, these are funds that the city has right now, left over from the street program. And I believe they are on about $103,000 right now, I believe. I'll have to check with Rick. I tried to call him to find out exactly what that was, but that's what the remaining balance is. And again, that money is available for UEZ projects. That's funding that came back to the city when the state stopped funding the program. We received about $750,000. Some of it was used for outstanding programs. $250,000 is still in a fund right now to pay debt service on fire trucks. Actually, it's less than $250,000, but we've made some payments on that. But the remaining balance that is available right now is about $103,000. I'll give you the exact number on that, and I'll give you the exact number of the loans outstanding. But it is about $14,000 right now. And as the city manager indicated, I need to bring him up to speed on this, so I am in agreement that we table this tonight and bring him back another time.
Any questions?
The only thing I was going to say is that I have a bunch of questions about the audit, so would it be helpful if I just emailed them to you, Tom, and then you? Okay, that's fine.
Sure.
Thank you. Tom, we'll also, we have a number of special events. Some are new, some are returning, and maybe Tom could walk us through each of those.
Sure. The first one is Step Up for the Art. It's a walk done by the Art nonprofit. This is an event they've done, I think, for three years right now. Great event, good fundraiser for them. Any questions on that? Next one is a request. Last year, you know, we became one of the Pink Town Pinks, City's Pink Art. They have approached us again to be part of that. There are now 30 cities that actually participate in this. It's a great program, and it's a great economic boost for us because people come to the city and support those cities that are part of the Pink Town Pinks. That will be for the month of May in 2014. And there's really no cost to the city as far as that's concerned. And this is sponsored by Meridian Health. They supply most of the support materials for that. We do have one new application. This is from Rebuild by Designs. People who were here last council meeting talked about the initiatives that they were undertaking in the city. They have a request to do a parade in the city that will take place on March 22nd, approximately 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. They are doing an event down in the Berkeley Cartageway Hotel, sort of a workshop exhibit event there, where different vendors will be displaying different things, and Rebuild will be talking about a number of sustainable initiatives that they're undertaking as they begin to develop a process for Asbury Park. They mentioned last meeting, Asbury Park has been chosen as one of the places that they will possibly do one of their projects in.
You said possibly do one of their projects?
Well, to get it funded, yeah. They have to put the project together. Initially, my understanding is that they picked a number of projects. Now, this group will develop that project and then submit it to HUD for final approval.
Specifically for Asbury Park?
Specifically for Asbury Park.
Okay. Because I know, I guess, when I first read this, they want to pull it with the city, and we're picking at the tab for it, which I don't care. As long as it's going to benefit the city, I'd be happy to do it.
They have asked us to waive the special events fees. The only fees that I see that will be part of this is really police, which we never waive. So I've indicated to them that that would be the situation.
Is also garbage collection?
Well, they're only going to be marching down to the Berkeley Cartageway. First of all, I don't think it's going to be a big parade. Second of all, I don't think there will be a lot of people here.
But they're going to leave the police across the street?
Yeah, and they're going to pay for all that.
And how, just because I don't know, how does that work? Do we build them beforehand and they pay?
Yeah, with the police, anybody who's utilizing police during a special events contract, event, they sign an individual contract with the police that designates how many police officers are involved, and they pay that directly to the police department.
Got it.
Then we have a number of wedding applications.
They look fine.
Yeah, they're all fine. However, we have come, have been made aware that the fees on some of these applications are different. We changed the fees for weddings in December of 2012, and as I researched these, most of these ones that had the wrong fee on it came from Valco's Catering, which is a new catering company down at the Berkeley Cartageway, so they're using old application. We processed a number of applications from them last year, and they paid the full fee. So they're just using all the application to make sure that they get a best position.
So the correct fee is $100, $150, $100?
Correct fee is $100 for the application and $150 for each.
And they pay upfront?
They do, yes.
Paulson? Yes, Tom. Hey, Tony, you normally, you know, bazooka somebody when that happens?
Not real.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda we have is a contract for the quadruple collection of municipal court debt. We're wording a bid, and we would ask City Council to move this to the formal agenda to take action.
I'll be happy to comment on this. I left, how we have a proposed resolution on the dates for all of you this evening, and it resides the fact that on August 7th, 2013, the mayor and council authorized the city manager to solicit proposals from interested vendors for the collection of delinquent municipal court fines. And then on November 14th, a formal request for proposals and qualifications for this matter was issued under the fair and open process. Public notice of that was advertised in November in the Asbury Park Press on two occasions and in the Star Ledger on one occasion. On December 4th, the city received an open proposal from six interested vendors. Following the receipt of the proposals, the matter was referred to a review committee composed of relevant city officials in order to evaluate and rank each of the proposals submitted and to ensure that the vendors complied with all of the requirements set forth in the RFP/RFQ. The review committee was composed of our then-acting city manager, Tony Nuccio, myself, Ricky Gartz, our CFO, along with Tracy Lizardi, who's our municipal treasurer. The review committee utilized the criteria set forth in the RFP/RFQ as a guide when evaluating and ranking the proposals, and those criteria included the following. One, the financial proposal offered to the city. Two, the quality of the services offered by the vendor. Three, the experience of the vendor. And four, the qualifications of the vendor, along with other requirements that are prescribed by the New Jersey Administrative Office of the Courts. Following our review and ranking of the proposals, and I have all of the proposals here in front of me, they're weighty documents. Each one of them is a bound book, basically, that required a certain amount of review and abstracting to go through each and every page and document that was included as part of each proposal to ensure that they had included everything that was called for and to then go through, and I compliment Tracy Lizardi on this because she really took the lead on this project. We contacted all of the municipal clients of all of these vendors to find out their prior experience with the vendors, if they had good comments to say about them, and we had a whole list of questions that she went through with each and every governmental agency. And that was incorporated as part of a spreadsheet that the review committee then got together and reviewed when we were ranking these proposals. And ultimately, a determination was made by the review committee that MSB, Government Services of Austin, Texas, provided the most advantageous proposal to the city, price and other factors considered. And primarily, our consideration when it came to price was the fact that MSB was the only one of the vendors that had offered to rebate 10% of their commission earned in the first 100 days from contract execution to the city, along with, of course, the city will be recovering those municipal court fines and debt that they are able to get through their collection process. So we do think this is advantageous, and based upon our review of these proposals, it's our opinion as a review committee together, it was unanimous, that MSB offered the most advantageous proposal to the city, price and other factors considered. And we recommend that you consider making an award of the contract to them this evening. Once an award is made by the council, the matter has to go to the New Jersey Administrative Office of the Courts, where they are to be on approval. I expect that we should gain their review and approval to this contractor because this contractor has worked for, and is currently working for, 10 other New Jersey municipalities, so the AOC is familiar with them. And they were very highly regarded by all of the governmental agencies that we contacted.
If there are no questions, we'll move to the next item, which is the transportation facilities. There was a letter forwarded by Mr. Fettow on January 31st to the mayor and the city council, and he brought City Council up to date regarding the two tenants that the city has at the James J. Howard Transportation Center. Those leases have expired, and the city should have forwarded the tenant option to renew. The city, it appears, failed to send that out. Nevertheless, we are going to seek that the tenants pay the increase in rent, which should have been 3%. We are going to go out and meet with, see if those tenants would like to remain there. However, we are also going to meet with the jury of tenants to determine the ridership and how the ridership has increased from 2009 to the current day. And we are going to then decide on whether we should be seeking a commercial realtor to assist the city in marketing the additional spaces there. When the city originally put out offers for bid, there were seven spaces, and only two people were interested in 2009. The ridership has picked up substantially. We believe that there may be other tenants that are looking for that space and perhaps would seek a commercial realtor to assist us in filling those spaces. So I am going to go out, I'm going to be meeting with the individuals that are there now, extend, and then we'll have a formal extension of their lease through the period that the term originally allowed, and then simultaneously coming back to City Council with a determination of how we're going to move forward with leases after this lease expires.
I just have one question here. In looking at this, the current vendors pay $32.18 respectively per square foot, and based on the information here, it's somewhat lower. Is there a reason for that? Because I'm looking right here, leasing at approximately $12, $15 per square foot for the rents in downtown area of Asbury Park typically run approximately $18 to $22.
Agreed, that there is a large difference. Now, the $12 to $15 a square foot, that may be where it's a triple net lease, and it doesn't include all of the additional expenses the tenant may be paying. It's typical that commercial tents are paying for utilities, paying for any of the common area maintenance, and paying for their share of real estate taxes. So I don't know how these numbers, the $12 to $15 per square foot numbers, are reported, whether they're triple net or non-triple net leases. If they were triple net, they'd probably come closer to $25 a square foot when all those ancillary costs are added. In my opinion, we would probably be best served by a commercial realtor because they'll know the market, and they'll go out soliciting us, the clients. We can't twist anyone's arm in the future to pay the $32, so they may be indeed paying less as we go forward. Perhaps they have been overpaying, but they have been paying this since they've been there according to the lease terms, and we will be asking them for the 3% increase that the lease calls for.
And we will, at the next signing of the lease, make sure that they do pay the utilities? Because I understand they have not been doing so.
I understand that as well. Yes, that will be addressed most likely before the termination of this contract lease.
Great.
Okay, if there are no questions on that item, the next item is the summer rental regulations ordinance. I understand that Fred, again, forwarded correspondence to City Council on January, the mayor and City Council on January 31st, and this is to facilitate, if you will, how the city will regulate seasonal rentals. We hope between now and the next council meeting, City Council will have an opportunity to review this ordinance. This ordinance is similar to what neighboring towns use. We will then take any of the comments between today and the next council meeting and incorporate those in our annill. I will be also simultaneously meeting with our code enforcement unit to see if they have any comments or suggestions on this draft ordinance and be presenting the ordinance for first reading at the next meeting.
So we've met a couple of times, I think, about the summer CEO when it was initially on the table. So bringing it back and then implementing it, obviously before Memorial Day, would be one of the major goals, right?
Absolutely. We'll have it the next meeting, which would be the second meeting, February. Steve, the second meeting in March, we have.
And that would be interesting.
And this, as you recall, some of you may recall, was an issue that the prior council had started to move forward with, but we were really coming into the summer season as it was starting to be addressed, and then some issues had arisen when staff reviewed the draft of the ordinance. And there were some meetings, as Councilman Quinn indicated, that involved staff of the city along with other interested parties. And for whatever reason, the prior council determined, I can't recall exactly, not to move forward with it at that time, but I included with your packets the draft that existed as of then that you didn't formally move forward with back then that we could use as a template now, taking another look at this, see if this matches what you're looking to do, and if it works with our staff and if I that it will be feasible to implement and make the process, the intention is to make the process easier.
Great.
Fred, I will send you some questions I have in regards to this.
Item five on our workshop agenda is managed by City Council.
John?
John?
Councilman Moore?
Yesterday, the governor was in Keeneburg, and as much as he said there's not as much FEMA money as he was hoping to be, right now there's $1.46 billion in funding with FEMA Friday from the Department of Housing and Urban Development through the CPVG Disaster Recovery Action Plan. And I read it real quick, but some of the numbers you look, there's $535 million available for infrastructure work. There's $225 million available to help government entities meet federal funding matching obligations for 9010. There's $110 million to be awarded to local governments to sustain essential services to be at least higher EMT, TBW, and there's $5 million to encourage tourists. Do we have somebody on top of this to make sure that we're submitting applications and we're aligned to get some of this money?
Right. We've had several conversations with one of our local Assemblymen, who is supporting efforts by the city at this time. You were part of the meeting that we had, we're going over all of our claims for FEMA in the past, and she is in the process of writing letters of support for us so that we could get some of this money.
They're past things. I'm talking about future things and applications that have to be in, I think, like March 1st or something, it's like 90 days or whatever. I read it very quick before I got here, but as long as we're on top of that future funding, because looking at all the categories, we qualify for all.
Will you turn down the MAGA system and give, there's a reverberation?
Okay, so, and then that's fine. A couple of meetings ago, Randy Thompson made a presentation about his request. Have we progressed anywhere on that?
I do have it on that.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Yes, I have been in contact not only with Randy, but also the VNA, and there's information that I have to get to the council. The VNA will be here to get up to the night, it's the next council meeting. Hopefully, we'll be able to pass a resolution.
Thank you, that's all, thank you.
Councilman Anderson?
First of all, welcome to the new city manager. Second of all, and I'm not sure, I think Jackie did come up with a chamber that we are having a St. Patty's Day parade, that I'm encouraging businesses and people, it's our first one, I'd like to see a successful one. And the application process is very easy, you can do it right online. So I do encourage it, that's March, March 9th, so I do encourage it, and that's after the Fisherman's Plea Month, which is a court event also. Went to the Little League fundraiser, and you have all stuff, so a great organization to contribute to. They need a lot of money for fielding, to take kids down to Florida, for all kinds of things. Also, I got an invite, I'm just going to share with everyone, the Night of the Stars, Asbury Park High School is running a fundraiser, which is a fashion show on February 12th at the Berkeley Hotel. And of course, in case of bad weather, it's the 13th at the high school. They're also asking that you bring a food item, non-perishable food item for the Mercy Center in Asbury Park. And that's it.
Just a couple of things. Is it possible for us to get on the schedule for our parks to be cleaned? It seems to be kind of haphazard. Perhaps it's a day of the week or a time when we say, this is the day, our city workers go out, we clean our parks, kiddies park, the veterans park, sunset, whatever it is. Because when I do my, you know, walk around the town, and I go, you know, this, I don't talk anymore like, hey, you should pay, you know, the work, but when I'm walking around and you see this and it just, it really breaks, I mean, we just got to do something about it. It's wintertime now, but it's something we can start, you know, thinking about.
Absolutely, reasonable request.
And the other thing, this thing with the parking now, they did a good job this time around with the plowing and everything, but they have to do something where people get off certain streets when there's a snowstorm. They have to know to get off of these streets. You guys got to get together, put your hands together, decide which streets it is, but so that people know not to park there, so everything can be plowed, so when it's cleaned, they can park there on the other side of the street, or the other streets can't be done. You know, Coachy Road can figure out how to get people off a certain street, and certainly should be able to. Thank you, that's all I have.
I have a couple more things. So Fred and I, I don't know if you, if you can just give a very brief update that we have, are paying for the parking itself, it's been read. We should be going out to advertise this week?
Yes.
And then conceivably, if everything goes according to plan, within 25 or so days, we would accept proposals?
We would open the proposals.
Open the proposals and evaluate?
And then hopefully be in a position to make a recommendation of a word to the council at the first meeting in March, hopefully.
Okay, so like three little practical things. First note, if you are, if you have not, if a street has not been plowed, and it is not normal nine to five hours, and I know I brought this up last time, Tony, is there any ability to contact whoever is out on the street plowing and just refresh their memory to hit the street? And the reason I say it is because I get a ton of calls from people who have alleys, who their alleys are never plowed and their cars are in their alley, so unless they're waiting for the snow to melt, they're not getting their car out.
Right, there's not going to be any way to get direct contact to the operators of the ploughs. My suggestion would be is to, all right, call public maintenance, all right, leave a message on machine public maintenance during snow emergencies, all right, they are manning the phones and they are checking, all right, the message is there.
Okay, so the best way to communicate with public maintenance during a snowstorm is to call them, not email call?
Yeah, I mean, they're not going to be checking emails.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, do it tonight, just using their phones.
Okay. So again, during, when we have a snow emergency, how are we getting the word out that we're either picking up recycling, not picking up recycling, picking up garbage, not picking up garbage? Are we, are we doing anything to get the word out?
With that, you know, we would talk to, I'll talk to Joe Pugna about that and see what we can establish. I know he's been very diligent about posting things.
Yeah, and he'll text me and I'll get it on next door, but for all the people in this town who aren't on the computer, all in those purposes.
We'd hate to use Code Red for that.
Agreed, I agree, I agree. And again, we could just think about it and brainstorm how to reach people about recycling and garbage.
We could ask about it.
Okay, and then my third one is another joke. So at the parking meters, it's, I'm, what's being brought up at the parking meeting, and I'm not even sure why it's brought up at the parking meeting, but it's consistently brought up at the parking meeting, is that we need a new street sweeper? And I just wondered if you could just take me through the process on how we would go about getting a new street sweeper? And how can I help kickstart that process?
I did meet with Ricky Gartz prior to starting, and he did mention that he had held up any capital purchases last year, wanting to get more familiar with the city. He believes there, the city is behind in purchasing capital type of equipment. So we would normally assess what the needs of the city are. Tony mentioned, or you asked a general question about how do we contact truck drivers? Well, I asked that question as well. We do have a radio problem, so there is a need for capital purchase of radios, there may be a need for additional CCTV cameras. Joe needs some equipment, larger equipment for plows, who have some difficulty with the heaviness of the snow. So we will send a capital request out to departments to determine what our capital needs are, and we'll introduce a bond ordinance to the City Council, and most likely bond for the equipment.
And Jack, this was brought up a while ago, and you were not here, right? And we just said, look, we have to explain the bullion on this, and nobody put up an argument at the time. I mean, it was something that we really needed.
My question was, you know, I talked to Joe, and again, that was one of my first questions that I asked to Ricky, and he said that there wasn't anything last year, so I only anticipate that there would be a backlog. And Joe told me of his problems, Councilman Moore referenced that he was intimately familiar with their dire need for equipment, specifically snowmobile equipment. The mayor and I have spoke about the problems with CCTV cameras and the The mayor and I spoke about the problems with CCTV cameras and the capital requirements there.
I don't want a CCTV camera.
Close circuit.
Oh.
So we know that there, I do know, in my third day of the job, that there is that need. We need to analyze it and make a proper presentation to city council and bond for it.
Great.
And we had a conversation this afternoon, when John was talking about the equipment, I mean, this morning, that was possible, you know, the towns were getting.
Yeah, well, there's, once we have a funding source, we take those funds and possibly purchase federally, federal surplus equipment. I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Joe today, I'm not sure if he's familiar with the federal surplus program, but we're still going to need funds to purchase that surplus equipment.
All that stuff is free.
He was going up.
And the balloons, the 400 thousand dollar balloons, they're given to every town for a dollar, so. And I know Tommy Gironda from the Fire Department did time off, or now they're, they can apply to it, things happen also, I'm not sure if Joe did.
Who was the individual?
Tom, Tommy Gironda, he's a battalion chief at the Fire Department, and he's in charge of training and also has the choir and equipment like that. Once he found that, he just sold all the applications. The equipment, there's no question about it. EMTW needs equipment, fire, they need equipment, but it's winter time, it's the wrong time to acquire winter equipment, but right now, you know, we're 45 days away from spring, so many days away from summer. We do not have a beach rig, we do not have a tractor, we do not have screws to pick up the trash. I mean, that planning, that's supposed to be looked at right now also, so we're going to be sitting out here in July, maybe by a beach rig, because we could go in June.
Very good.
Okay, there's two things I want to mention. I received several phone calls about what a wonderful job public courts did this past snowfall in cleaning the streets, and so I'd like to commend them. I've also mentioned though, the past couple council meetings, we have a calendar, and I assume everyone has received their calendar now, but when the deployment of trucks go out there, I know there's a list of priorities, but I certainly would like to see those trucks going to all four quadrants so that we make sure that there's not one section that's getting covered more than the other. At the last snowfall, I did travel throughout the city, and I noticed the streets that were, were clean the best, and the streets that were east and west, it was the north and south. I don't know if that weren't cleaned that well, I don't know if that had anything to do with the blow of the wind or what. The other thing is, with all that snow out there, we have so many absentee landlords or residents that do not bother to clean their sidewalks, and we need to look into a way of making sure that they either do that or they receive some type of summons. So you have students coming home, and even adults, that are walking in the streets because the sidewalks aren't clean. Including, yes, including the cities, because that was, someone stopped me yesterday and said, why isn't the city's sidewalk on Springwood Avenue clean? So I throw that out. I do want to mention a few other things. The county prosecutor, Chris Frumicioli, will be speaking on the subject of heroin abuse and its increasing use by the student population in Monmouth County. At Neptune High School on February 12 at 7:00 PM, in only one year, heroin deaths of 18 and 25-year-olds in New Jersey rose 24%. This is not good, but everyone is invited. Something else that's on the legislative agenda, as members of the National Bipartisan Mayor's Against the Guns Coalition, we are right to express our strong opposition to legislation in the Senate that would permit guns in our post offices. The proposal reform bill, S.1486, that would override a 40-year-old US Postal Service regulation and would compel all post offices in the country to allow customers to carry guns in this federal facility. So if you write, please write to your federal legislature. Last but not least, on behalf of the New Jersey Economic Development Authority, this is a letter I received, and I would like to congratulate you on being approved for a stronger New Jersey business grant, and this was directed to Marilyn Schlochba. It says, we hope that your stronger New Jersey grant will meet your needs, but if you are in need of further assistance, please take a few minutes to learn about the stronger New Jersey business loan program, so it's still out there. And I think we all should commend Marilyn. And that's it for me. And welcome, horse cows.
I was going to say, this is the most handsome first row I've had, and I've been on since July 1.
If I could, at this point, just indicate to the crowd that council is not going to be taking action this evening on any matters that were addressed during our executive session held at 5:00 PM this evening. And also, I did just want to report out on the fact that proposals were received and opened yesterday for the website development, design, and maintenance project, and the city received 17 proposals from interested vendors. At this point, the city manager is going to be convening a review committee to narrow down the list and to make a recommendation for a word of contract to the council at a future council meeting. That's it, thank you.
And mayor, that concludes our workshop session agenda. Thank you.
On your turn, so who?
Bye.